It's a great day in Kershaw County. We've got a wonderful crowd here in this all-American county. We've got a pretty darn good baseball team here, too. The Ponytails, thank you all for coming. And we've made it through a hurricane. We've got a great deal to be thankful for. And so I'll ask you all to allow Mr. Sammy Tucker, our vice chairman, to lead us in the invocation and in pledge of allegiance. Mr. Tucker?
Let us all bow our heads and open our hearts, please. Godfather Almighty, we say thank you for this day. We thank you for the coverage and protection that you gave us through the hurricanes and the winds and the storms, Lord Father. We thank you for the young people that are here today representing our county at the highest level and showing us that we are not only smart, but we're good at many things. Now, Lord Father, bless the minds and hearts that's up here that's liberating the people's business and let us make good, sound decisions. And I ask a special prayer for our men and women that are protecting our freedoms and liberties that's here in the USA and abroad. Go with them, protect them, cover them, and watch over them. We ask these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Tucker. With that, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is public comments. Mr. DeBeauz.
Three people have signed up. The first person that signed up is Jim Steele.
As Mr. Steele comes up, I just remind the audience that these are intended for one-way communications that we, the county, would hear from citizens where we'd otherwise not hear from you in our daily lives. The comments should fit the decorum and the gravity of this body, and we look forward to hearing from you, Mr. Steele, sir.
Before I get into what I wanted to talk about tonight, which is economic development, I'd just like to make one observation. The new layout of the room here, if that was meant to make the public feel even more removed from county government than they felt before, I congratulate you on your success. Now, going on into economic development, I read in the paper today that we're looking for a new economic development director. A lot of people believe that economic development is just bringing in jobs for the people in the county. That's just the surface of it, okay? When you get on the internet and you start delving into what is economic development, it gets a little scary. Starts looking a whole lot like George Orwell's 1984. When you look at it, it says economic development not only goes into GNP per capita, population growth, occupational structure of the labor force, consumption per capita, infrastructure, but it also goes into social things such as the social condition, literacy rates, life expectancy, health care, and even goes into caloric intake. In other words, they want to develop a workforce that is very healthy so they can produce more for a longer period of time, okay? One of the most referenced economists is Joseph Schumpeter. Joseph Schumpeter lived in the 1800s. He was a...he believed in Keynesian theory, and he once called Karl Marx the greatest social scientist of the 19th century. So I just caution you, when we're looking for a new director of economic development, let's pick someone who is focused on bringing in jobs and not controlling our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Mr. DeBeauz?
The next person that signed up is Wesley Crowley.
Hello, y'all have to excuse me. I just got off work. I have to agree with the gentleman. I agree with what he says. I think there's a lot that can be done in this county in a better way. And when I say a better way is the internet, anybody can put anything on it. There needs to be people in this council that knows what to do. There's been money lost that we paid our taxes, millions of dollars. Where's the people that's supposed to check these things out? And who checks their qualifications? You know, there's a park underwater over there. What good is it to us, the community? None at all. You know, if you want to waste money, I don't want mine, and I'm sure the constituents of this county don't want their money wasted either. So my suggestion is this time next year, there will be a new council. And on this back page here, I have to agree with some of this on this back page because this council hasn't shown me anything, and I've been here 20 years. And I'm just now realizing how much money y'all have wasted in just this last two, three years, and it shouldn't be done. So if you can't screen your people and you don't know how to hire them, I suggest you find someone who can. I'm a mill ride engineer by trade. I went to Floridaleal's up there in Spartanburg, Greenville. I've been overseas. I know what it takes to make something for a community and not waste their money. And there was one other thing I like to say. I have never threatened this office or nobody in it. I speak my mind. And as far as anything else goes, that'll be between me and Mr. Bone and this council. Y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Mr. DeBeauz?
The third and last person that signed up is David Fuller.
Mr. Fuller.
Chairman Burns and council members, I appreciate you giving me this allowance for me to come and speak tonight. I'm David Fuller. I'm commander of American Legion Post 17 here in Camden. The reason I have requested to speak tonight is to remind Kershaw County council members of a request that our legion had made back in July of 2018. We submitted a letter to the county council. A copy of that same letter has been handed out to each of you tonight. I, as well as our legion executive board, hope that you had read the letter that you had in your possession, and if not, we sure hope you will read the copy you have in your possession now. We had requested that the property that was purchased just out northwest of US Highway 1 and the Bobby Jones Bridge, intently named Watery River Park, could be named Watery River Veterans Park. And we still hope that you still honor that request. We also asked the members from our post, could we be included on the planning committees concerning the development of the riverfront park? And at this time, that has not taken place. If you travel around our state and nation, I hope you have taken the time to notice the many veterans parks or memorial sites that our cities and small towns have honoring our veterans and soldiers that I have and those that are serving our great country. Kershaw County, as of 2018, has 6,197 veterans, all that call Kershaw County home, and that number is growing every day. To have a veterans park honoring our veterans and our soldiers serving now would be the right thing to do. I'm sure that some of you are familiar with the 505th Parachute Infantry Regiment Monument located on the Vista property, once Dupont. On March 29, 1943, the 505th Parachute Infantry Regiment from Fort Riley conducted the first regimental mass parachute exercise in US Army history preparing to serve in World War II. Several thousand paratroopers landed in the fields, some in the river, and as the letter states, different sides of the highway. I'm sure very few landed on that very spot that the monument is located. There were several paratroopers that lost their lives during this mission. One of Kershaw County's own First Lieutenant Ivy Conell was one of those paratroopers. Later that year, October 96, 1943, Lieutenant Conell was killed in action in Italy in World War II. Each year on March 29, the American Legion, Marine Corps League, and the VFW, along with the 505th and members of the 82nd Airborne, conducted a ceremony at the 505th monument in memory of that historical event. Each year, some of those that attend the ceremony comment saying that it would be nice if the monument was more accessible. Most of us who have here have passed by that monument several times, I'm sure. Several of us have passed by that monument, I'm sure, today, several times a day. And if I was to ask each of you, have you ever seen anyone there looking and observing the 505th monument? There would not be many that could say yes. I have commented before that I have had several opportunities to ask people if they have visited the monument. 99% of those would say no, that they did not know, and they also did not know what that monument represented. Several commented that they thought it was monument for Vista and Dupont. What we would like to see done is to move the 505th monument, along with other veterans' monuments in our county, down to the left-hand side of the park's entrance with a flag display of American flag, state flag, as well as flags representing each branch of service, and a POW/MIA flag. A very patriotic memorial that will honor all veterans, located in a place that is accessible to the public and would give better access to those with limited mobility to visit the monument. When people visit our county, as well as our residents, pass Watery...when they pass Watery River Veterans Park entrance and see the veterans memorial, you will see people stopping and visiting our monuments, I will guarantee. Again, the monuments will be accessible to all visitors, and it will be a great contribution and asset to the park entrance and the park itself. I understand from reading tonight's council agenda that you'll be deciding on phase one of the park. Again, may I request that when you enter phase two of planning of the park period, the park project, that you seriously consider naming the park Watery River Veterans Park and not Watery River Park. It would mean a lot to our veterans, and it would also mean a lot to all our residents. Thank you, council, for your time, and again, we ask you seriously to consider this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuller. Mr. DeBeauz?
That concludes the sign-up list.
Very good, and that concludes the public comments. We move now to an adoption of agenda. The agenda's on the board. Danny has it up. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Snodgrass. Any discussion? I would say only one thing. Mr. ...the administrator, Mr. Carpenter, has asked for a brief executive session before we go into ordinance number two, which is a series of four votes on economic development projects, and we'll go into executive session if we get a motion to that effect. I'm not asking for a vote on that at this time. All right, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, Mary, and we move on to the first item and the best item here tonight. There are those young schoolgirls there, and their parents are here, and I can't tell you how proud we are of them. The item is a proclamation, Kershaw County Ponytail Softball Team. It's at Tab A, but it's up on the board, and if I can get it up on my little gizmo here, I will read it, and then I'll ask for a vote. Proclamation. Honoring and recognizing the Kershaw County Ponytail Softball Team. Whereas the Kershaw County Ponytails closed their season as first in South Carolina and with an appearance in the Dixie League World Series in Texas, finishing fourth, this is only the second time in our county's history that one of our teams has played in the Dixie League World Series. And whereas the Dixie League is comprised of 12-year-old and under-girls, participation in and support of sports, and athletic achievement is an important part of Kershaw County recreation programs, as well as developing leadership skills and creating a tradition of excellence. Whereas the Kershaw County Council recognizes the outstanding achievement, excellence, tradition, leadership, and the positive role model for all our youth throughout this county that the Ponytail Girls Softball Team has provided for the community. Their victory as state champions was supported by local businesses, churches, and parents especially, who joined with our great volunteer head coach, Lee Stokes. I hope he's here tonight. Yep, there you are, Lee. And assistant coaches Stephen Shehorn and Waylon Watkins. Yay, coach. Now, therefore, let it be known that the Kershaw County Council acknowledges the Kershaw County Ponytail Softball Team and applauds them for their outstanding athletic achievement and urges all citizens to be cognizant of the importance of organized sports and the development of our most valuable asset, our youth, adopted this day. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make that a motion.
Mr. Beauxard, a second?
Second.
Yeah, Mrs. Snodgrass, thank you very much. Discussion?
We all are very proud. Congratulations.
Yes, yes, we are.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other comments? I especially want to say to the parents that helped raise all the funds, all those businesses. Lee, I know you'd...Coach Lee, I know you'd say that, too. It's just wonderful. We all watched with anticipation, and we're so keen to have you here tonight. Well, enough of all...
This just backs up the fact that we are the all-American city.
All-American city.
And those girls prove it to us right there.
They are. Right there. Thank you, Shane, for guiding this as a rec. department effort. Thank you very much. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Conell?
To the girls directly, I'd like to say, whenever you go back to school, typically people ask you the question, "What'd you do over the summer?" Y'all probably have one of the best answers, don't you?
Yes, you do.
Congratulations on all your hard work. Keep it up. We're proud of you.
And Mr. Conell, I was afraid for a moment there you were going to tell them they didn't have to go to school tomorrow.
I mean, I'd make the motion, but I don't think we have that authority.
We can try it.
All right, let's go to a vote, and then we'll do some picture-taking. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And Mary, it's unanimous, and it is adopted this 10th day of September. Let me have them all come forward through the little gates, and I think the council members would like to get their pictures, and the coaches, too. Before we go on to the next item of business, Shane would like to say something.
I would just like to say that this is something that didn't just happen in one year. These girls have been on the grind with softball for many years. Some of these girls have participated in other state championship opportunities and coaches pitch as well, so this is not something they've just done...they've done all of a sudden. They've been working on this for a long time. Our softball has been participating in Dixie softball for maybe about five or six years, so it just speaks volumes that we were able to turn around a World Series team that quick. And these girls are the first girls to do that. And I just love seeing these girls in the community because they're so happy, and I just appreciate the bond that it has created with these girls and our county. So it's just, in my opinion, taught our county to be, you know, to trust each other and support each other, and that's what these girls have done and taught us, along with their coaches. Lee has been at this for a long time, as well as Stephen and Waylon. Waylon's been doing it in baseball and softball for years, and there's many other parents that are with these girls that have coached for us as well. So not only do they make their parents proud, I feel they make our county proud and our recreation department proud.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you.
Mr. Beauxard?
Talking with some of the girls, all the girls are not here off that Pony League team. Some of them multi-talented, and they're on the soccer team also. I asked where the catcher was, and she's playing soccer, so this is not all the girls. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Oh, one last thing is we can't run this county without volunteers, and the volunteers, coaches, parents, families, we owe everything to you. And as we go into the soccer season and the football season, those volunteer coaches are just irreplaceable. Now, yeah, Mr. Jones?
You could say one quick word. You know, let's not forget the parents, because guys, I know, as a parent of a child who did wrestling year-round, and it takes a lot of commitment from the family as a whole, and I salute you. I really do. And let me say this, too. Thank you for bringing a smile on all our faces. This council doesn't have a whole lot of happy moments, but you got us all smiling up here, so I say something for you guys. Thank you.
Any further comments? Well, I don't know, coaches and parents, if you want to stick around and watch boring business happen, but we move now into the difficult part of this where we won't be smiling so much. So if you will, you're certainly welcome to leave, but it doesn't count as an excuse to miss your homework tonight. Thanks, Coach Lee Stokes. We'll let the room clear, and then we'll go.
You are so right.
Well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We move now to our agenda again, public presentations, one, two, and three. The first of which is a Friends of the Library check presentation from Mr. Bob Gian Giorgi. Wherever you'd like, probably right there, so the public listening in can hear your presentation.
All right, well, first of all, Chairman Burns, county council, thank you for allowing us to do this presentation here. It, I think, brings a level of visibility to both the library as well as the Friends of the Library. Before I talk more about that, just did a little look at research about libraries, and recent survey, 94% of Americans feel that having a public library improves the quality of life in the community. Also, in terms of usage, various research pegs it between 55% to 65% of residents use the library. So we're talking about a county resource that is valued and used. To the Friends, we're a private citizens group that really are just members that join to support the county library. That support comes in a number of ways. One, there's the membership fee, and that varies depending on the basic membership up to whatever you want to contribute. And then we do an annual book sale, which, by the way, we're in the midst of getting that off the ground, and it starts September 19. We have a board of friends that meets monthly to talk over our activities, get guidance from Amber as to the kinds of things that we should be doing. Would just like our board members that are here to stand up. We have two, I believe. I don't know if anybody else has come in. Al Reed and Kate Denton. We have about seven on the board. Typically, what we do every year is fund a variety of activities at the library. We sponsor the summer reading program, for example. Also, usually we do a project that has to do with, let's say, library infrastructure. And for the past...usually we do one significant project a year. For the past several years, we've delayed that based on the guidance of Amber with her idea of the Friends supporting the renovation of the meeting and conference room at the Camden Library. So, you know, that's very briefly what we're all about, the types of things that we do. And Amber, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of council. Thank you again for having us on the agenda tonight. I'm Amber Conger. For those of you all I haven't met yet, I've been proudly serving as your library director for the last almost four years.
Wow, really?
With us.
And a number one in South Carolina, too, as I remember.
Thank you. I am honored and humbled beyond words for what our Friends group continues to do for us. They are the most dedicated group of people who absolutely love the library and love and support our mission and are happy to spread the word and put their own blood, sweat, and tears into working all year long into developing fundraiser for us. This book sale is not something that only happens in September. It goes on all year because the community is amazing about donating their books, so they come to the library, then they have to go get sorted all year long, heavy, heavy labor that these people are doing for us. And then they're sorting, which is what's going on right now. By the way, I'm going to plug, if anybody's looking for an awesome volunteer opportunity right now, go on our Facebook page, and we can sign you up to volunteer to work with the book sale, which starts next Thursday. It's the Friends night. Thank you for allowing me to put the ad in again. I hope everybody comes. If y'all have not been to the book sale, it's over at the Old Armory, and it is amazing. The first time I ever walked in, my first year as director, I was so humbled. It made me emotional. I could not believe all the books that people had brought, and that so many hands worked so hard just to support the library and to support what we do. You know, everybody...what do you think of when you think of the library? Books, right? Everybody's default, but we're about so much more than that. It's not just books. We're about education. We're about workforce development. We're about community partnerships and bringing people together from different views, different walks of life. They can all come into the library and find their home. But I think beyond that, what we're about is hope. We're about giving people hope in our community, whether it's that two-year-old whose mama brings her to the library for storytime. That mom is there because she has hope for her child, because she knows that children who read grow up to be adults who think, and adults who think live happy, healthy, productive lives. We bring hope to the 85-year-old woman who's at home alone by herself, can't get out and drive, and Miss Hannah...way, Miss Hannah. Miss Hannah takes her books, takes her a stack of books, large print, that she devours. This lady has hope because she knows she still has things to learn and things to contribute to this world. And we could tell you story after story about that. And the people who support the library, we're here not just because we're readers, it's because we believe in supporting the hopes and dreams of other people. And that is how you build a strong community and a great community, and I see it everywhere. But I'm so proud of the people that support the library, and there's a few people I'd like to have stand tonight. If you're here as a staff member... If you're here as a staff member, Friends Board member, I'm not sure you all snip in. Come on, you knew you were going to get called. I'd like to point out a few of our staff. These ladies work so hard. We have Hannah Gustafson, she's our Bookmobile and Outreach Lady, Debbie Hemming from the Camden Branch, Lauren Decker, and Donna Goff. And they are very dedicated and very committed. But I definitely want to say, I have just, I'm blown away by the work of our Friends Board and all the volunteers, but especially to our President, Bob Gian Giorgi. Al Reed was our past president, Anthony Hawxworth has been our book sale chair. I call them the Three Amigos. They, every year, pull off this amazing sale. And because of that, the Friends are giving us $50,000 to support our library renovation. And on behalf of the library, the board, staff, and the county, and the citizens of this community, we thank you so much for your generosity.
It is really our honor to be able to do this. Everybody on the board and, and our membership in general just understands the contribution the library makes to the community. So with that.
Yeah, you want to come up here and do the presentation? Just for one moment, yes, please, please do, come on up.
And of course, I would, I don't want to leave you guys out. You all have been so supportive of the library as well, and we appreciate you so much. You all have been incredibly encouraging, and just thank you also.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Council, Mr. Con Heston.
I just had a follow-up comment to our library director. So it's not just the depressed or the old or those who might, you're getting tired parents out of bed, too. Over the weekend, both of my daughters grabbed me and said, I have to drop off three books each so they can pick up three more books each, which I'm, I'm sure they're devouring this weekend and will replay this weekend again. There's something about being a device society that's not good. Electronic devices are useful and they're helpful, but I think there's something important about having an organic document in your hand. I actually enjoy it a little bit more as a professional, but I see it paying off dividends with my kids, too, when they read. So thank you.
Other comments, Mr. Tucker, please.
Ms. Amber, and I'm going to call you the crew, all of you who participate. I want to say a special thanks because I do visit the library periodically. Yeah, some of us still do read. And I want to say that I appreciate that not only is it the workforce part of this piece that you guys do, but it allows folks in this rural county, as we continue to grow, to have internet access because we still have a lot of people that don't have that and a place to go. And I'm looking forward again, did it 10 years ago, but partnering up with the library, the county, and the volunteers to get this census done, which is going to be on electronic version this year. So I'm very excited, and I may not volunteer for the book sale, but I'll be doing a lot of volunteering with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Snodgrass.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, just a point of personal privilege, that thank you so much for the library that we have and the staff. Not unusual for my, for taking my kids there when it's my day to pick them up from school when we go there. And they enjoy, you know, going around, doing their homework and enjoying the selection there. As well as, I prepared many a sermon there in the main library and. And in your collection is a, is a much, they have a much sought-after commentary series, a new interpreters commentary series is in their collection. And when I first moved here and discovered that, I said, wow. It's because it saved me a lot of money because this is very expensive commentary. So thank you so much, thank you for all that you do.
Yeah, Mr. Bozard, sir.
I just have one question. With all the modern technology we got in the, several years back, the post office says they was losing money due to internet and everything Google. And some just read recently where some quick delivery companies, speed delivery and quick delivery and so forth, are losing money because the internet's taken up a lot of their business now. Are you seeing a decline in the clients coming in, the visitors coming into the library?
Our circulation statistics last year actually went up.
That's what I figured.
Very happy. We do understand that sometimes people do consume comment, content different ways. And so while print is never going away, and I firmly agree with you, Ben, it's absolutely different when you're reading it on, in a print book. However, we have also increased our digital collections to accommodate both. And so print's never going away, but our numbers were up last year, we're very proud of that. People are reading, don't let anybody tell you people don't read anymore, they're reading.
Thank you, and even Tucker will start reading again. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jones, you raise your hand there.
I was waving at somebody.
All right.
Ms. Amber, sad part about that, I do have my library card, I bet he doesn't.
I do have one friend out there.
I'm not going there, but I will say that if anybody does not have a card, we'd be more than happy to hook you up and we will not tell. All right?
Make sure you have books and pictures for Mr. Tucker.
Yeah, other comments?
What did you say?
You're being insulted there, Mr. Tucker.
That's right.
Uh, Mr. Tucker said he visits the library periodically, or is it periodicals? I couldn't really.
Both, both.
Okay, well, very good for that. And Amber, I'm just delighted you all come, but I would like to reiterate the point earlier made by many of us, that our volunteers, what make us a great all-American county, as in the ponytails and as you demonstrate, and our next agenda item, too. Further comments?
I just want to let you know, Bob, you're 1.25. They were number one, you 1.25, okay?
Thank you very much, everyone. We move to the next item. Thank you, thank you. Uh, the next item is on a public presentation, is a Clean Community Commission. Ms. Wanda Swan, ma'am, can you come forward? And we'd love to hear who's here from your team, too.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Councilmen. Thank you for having us, and I would like to recognize our team, if you would stand, please.
Oh, wow, they're all here.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I hope we bring a smile to your face tonight.
You do to mine.
Thank you.
Stop flirting.
That's going to be a real big laugh if you pull out that chair over there, Vic.
My name is Wanda Swan, and I'm Chairman of the Kershaw County Clean Community Commission. I'm here tonight to give you an update on our committee's progress as we have had a very productive year and are very excited about the year ahead. A few highlights from last year is that we applied for a $5,000 grant and won that grant from Palmetto Pride.
Yeah, good for you.
We purchased three anti-litter billboards and placed them around our county. And that handsome young man in that picture is my grandson. Just thought I'd mention that. We brought litter education into some of our, our schools. And we work with law enforcement and court systems to help enforce litter laws. We organized a spring litter pickup, and we utilized 105 volunteers. Slide number five. Forty-four, 440 bags of trash, and we were able to have 29.5 miles of roadside pickup.
Fantastic.
Thank you. We received 500 tarps and placed them at our recycle centers to be given out to truck owners who have had an unsecured load. This will eliminate extra trash on our highways. We placed six signs at boat ramps on Lake Watery to reduce litter being sucked out from boats and scattered onto our highways. The year ahead, we are participating in the Chicken Strut this coming Friday and Saturday. We will have a tent, and we will be handing out litter literature, books, coloring books, tarps, and litter pickup materials. This is to help educate our community. Our fall litter pickup is scheduled for November 2nd from 10:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon. Our goal is to have at least 200 volunteers. By the way, I am personally inviting each one of you to join us that day. We need all the volunteers we can get, and I think we have about 10 here, so please, please sign up.
Where's your assembly point?
Uh, we will have it in different areas of the county. And if you'll contact us and let us know, we try to put you in your area or your district so that you can work with local, local citizens that you know, some of your neighbors. We hope to be planting trees and restoring several unattractive intersections in our county.
Amen.
We, we want to recognize and award businesses with congratulatory plaques for maintaining and beautifying storefronts, parking lots, and entrances. We need to give folks a pat on the back when they do a good job. We want to work with council to help identify and clean dilapidated buildings in our county. You ask, why are we doing all of this? In 2014, South Carolina was named the dirtiest state in the United States. In 2018, we're still in the top 10. 55% of all realtors think that litter reduces property values for up to 9%. Industries looking for a new home are turned off by communities that do not care about litter and the cleanliness of their community. 85% of littering is the result of individuals' attitudes. We need to change attitudes of our citizens concerning litter by creating a new mindset that littering is not acceptable. We need to report litter bugs. We need to let our citizens know that it's not okay to litter. We need to educate, educate, educate through schools, the workplace, public events, billboards, and litter pickups. I can't tell you how many people have stopped me and said, wow, I was so impressed with how many people were picking up trash in our county, I want to help next time. It really does matter. We also want enforcement of our state and local litter laws. What would the results be? Pride in our community, bring industry and keep jobs right here in our county, increase property values, and increase local revenue, which I think that's music to your ears. The question now is, how can, how can you help our commission in this fight against litter? Palmetto Pride is offering a grant to each county in the state called the Litter Task Force Grant. The purchase of this grant, which is in your, your handouts, is a grant that provides funding for up to $20,000 to pay for a part-time litter control officer dedicated to enforcing state and local litter laws. This grant is a pilot program coordinated by Palmetto Pride for the sole purpose of providing assistance to county governments and to help enforce state and local litter laws. Grant recipients will have to option to receive funds for two years, provided that they fulfill the obligations of the grant. This grant also can be extended after the two years. It's a pilot program, and they are hoping to be able to extend it for even two more years. In your handouts, you have the eligible applicants, the purpose, how surrounding counties have already applied for this grant and received it, how they're using it, and it also is a litter officer job description. I must say that it, this is not, it's a rough draft, it's suggestions and approval. Working with county will be happy to make adjustments, it's just a suggestion. We will not win the public nuisance litter battle by being passive. We kindly ask for your support with our efforts to get our arms around the litter problem. Our committee's objective is not just to have a roadside litter pickup twice a year or just to call state DOT and ask them to pick up trash. We're here to raise public awareness and to bring on board every citizen in our great county to help make Kershaw County the cleanest county in the state, possibly the nation. But we can't do it alone. We need your help. It begins with your support. We respectfully request your support to allow our commission to apply for the Palmetto Pride Litter Task Force Grant in order to staff a litter officer to help us on this journey to become not just an all-American county, but also the cleanest county. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. And clarification for council, item number three under New Business Place, there by Councilman Jones addresses this issue of the litter agent. Ma'am, if you wouldn't mind standing up, there may be some comments and questions. Mr. Jones, I give you place of honor on this. Do you have any comments, sir?
I would just like to say thank you so much to each and every one of you. It's working, you're doing the right thing, and I appreciate your efforts. I'm going to support you tonight when we get to the grant, and I look forward to the years coming. And congratulations on what y'all have done.
Thank you.
And I'll give it now to Mr. Bozard, who created the commission without his motion some time ago. Mr. Bozard.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone that's on this committee, and I do thank you for every, all your efforts. And I travel the county quite a bit, and I was going down Clearwater Road the other day, which is off of 95 back, I mean, I was 521 back to the right, and up Highway 5 also, and I see a lot of handmade don't litter signs. And I appreciate whoever's doing that, I appreciate y'all doing that because them roads was clean the last time I went up them, and I thank you for your efforts, thank you.
Well, I can't take credit for that, I don't know who did it, but I'm grateful, too.
Uh, Mr. Tucker, vice.
Thank you, sir, Chairman. I, I just want to say thanks as well, and I'm always close to my appointee, the judge, who keeps me informed. He'll call me and tell me what all great things you guys are doing. And I, I just had two comments. One being, and I discussed this, and I think you actually touched on it, and we can get into it more when we get to the actual approving of the grant, but it was good to hear to say educate. I do not want someone just to enforce litter pickup, because if you don't educate, you're going to keep doing the same thing over and over. And tickets don't always fix people, education does. So it was good to hear you say that in your presentation, and we'll dive into that a little bit more. But I see when you gave us this bag, Adopt a Highway, some people are against plastic, but I'm, I'm not one of those. You know, I'd rather have this plastic bag full of trash than all the trash on the roadway.
Amen.
Yeah, I just have to weigh what's best. But that beautiful logo you have needs to be on this bag somewhere. And these need to be issued out to all of our citizens because they're great for your turn signal, and you can put trash in, and then the trash won't fall out your car for those who don't vacuum their car, you know? Just saying.
Chairman Tucker, we need money so we can get that logo.
Vic, can you fix that, please, sir?
I can do anything. Mr. Chairman, just want to add.
Mr. Snodgrass, go ahead.
Just want to echo what others are saying, want to thank you for your, your work and team that's on the community, the commission. Thank you so much. You know, it's, it all, it's, I think it's ironic that on the same night that we're honoring, honoring the library, and we're also having an economic development, some, some updates there that we're also talking about litter, because they all connect. I'm convinced that a company that wants to move here is not going to move here if we don't have an A-class library, which we do, and if, and if our town is dirty. And so thank you so much for, for taking the mantle and for it being volunteer and community-driven the way it is. And I'm also looking forward to working with you on some of those intersections, because we've got a few in East Camden that I believe will, will change the morale of things as we begin to.
I'm already working.
Move away from the highway grass. I mean, you know, highway grass isn't just, isn't that attractive? So we're going to replace the highway grass with something else. So thank you so much.
Ben, please, Mr. Carmel.
This really comes down to a tragedy of the commons where someone always thinks that someone.
that someone else will take care of it as you're driving down the road. And what I'm grateful for is this is a commission that's in its baby stages, but you've already accomplished so much, which is really encouraging next year for hopefully increasing your budget some. But also, you're organizing people in a way that they don't just think someone else will take care of it. You know, they're actually getting up and doing something about it and beautifying the community. Also, I just want to report to council that Pam Delk, who is with us tonight, she has decided to put in an application and accept the opportunity to serve, if appointed, on representing the Elgin area. So she'll have her application in, Mary, for the next meeting. So thank you for that, too.
Yeah. Other comments? Vic, I'd love to see that a two-November event is somewhere on one of the county websites. That would be great. And if we could put it up on the three cities' websites, that would be great, to Mr. Conell's point. And I wonder if the three municipalities are as aware as we are tonight of this good work that you all brought forward. I would like to encourage you to find a way for the representatives from each of the three municipalities to give some sort of update to each of the town mayors in some fashion, okay? And I'd be happy to help you with that, Wanda.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just thanks.
All right, Wanda, if you want to hang around for the vote, it'll be an item under New Business.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very persuasive.
1.5. Y'all 1.5. But everybody's a one.
Keeping up with the theme of volunteers, item number three under Public Presentations is an update on Vision 2030 from the Core Team, who are private citizens, about the survey. Paula Scarborough, please, ma'am.
I would like to echo what Councilman Snodgrass said a few minutes ago.
Paula, bring that mic over closer. Thank you.
What you said about library and litter and Vision 2030 are all part of the same thing about being better as a county. I'd hope to add my congratulations to the ponytails for their accomplishments, but isn't it wonderful?
Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
My name is Paula Scarborough, and as Chairman Burns said, I am representing the Vision Core Team tonight. Our members are, as Chairman Burns said, we're all volunteers, and we've been together since the beginning of Vision 2030. We appreciate the opportunity to address council this evening about Vision Kershaw 20 and our annual survey. As you can see on the screen is our 2030 vision statement. It's fairly comprehensive, but it's supported by goals and objectives and strategies within the vision plan itself. You've all seen that before. But before we get into some items on the vision itself and the survey, I'd like to step back a minute and talk about where we started and why. In 2015, February of 2015, County Council approved the concept of a county vision to complement the federally mandated 10-year comprehensive plan that was upcoming in 2016. With the help of the Planning Department and many others, vision organizers conducted three detailed workshops and more than 32 community engagement events. Hundreds and hundreds of people of all ages and occupations, from high school seniors on up, from all around the county, all these people participated in the seminars and workshops and community involvement events. Scores and scores of hours later, Vision Kershaw 2030 became a reality and was published and adopted by County Council, Camden, Elgin, and Bethune councils, and other groups in So why is a vision important for our county? Well, first of all, it does help to prioritize council decisions in their, on the goals and policies and operations and budgets. It inspires those individuals who wish to participate in and help direct the activities of their communities. And thirdly, and finally, it inspires participation in partnerships and collaboration among businesses, organizations, groups, and government who want to improve and grow our communities because we know that we work, when we work together, we are better together. This is the vision circle that you may have seen along the way. Each fall in 2000, since 2016, in collaboration with others in our community, we prepare a survey on the eight components of our Vision Kershaw and ask county citizens to go online to complete a not-so-brief, but not-so, it doesn't take that long to fill it out either. It's 50 or 60 questions or so. And that, those areas, the eight areas in that outer ring, each year, the number of respondents has more than doubled to over 900 respondents for 2018, many of whom took the time to write comments on one subject or another. We have incorporated some of the comments and suggestions into making this year's survey easier to comprehend and to navigate. We've eliminated some redundancies and questions, and we've refreshed others. We had some people who were particularly sensitive to grammar, some of the grammar in our questions last year. We had a lot of teachers that responded, and we got caught. The links to more community information, to finding more community information, are still there if someone wants to peruse a particular topic. Most importantly, we have left the comment sections intact to encourage residents to speak their mind, to give us their feedback on anything that they want to talk about. So back to our timeline, along the way in 2017 and 18, the, as we were doubling our respondents each year, the Vision Kershaw 2030 became one of the cornerstones for the All-America City application. And that was a very impressive presentation that you all made out in Colorado. But we won that designation, and we are ready to win more, so get busy. But this year, on October the 1st, we will release our 2019 survey and promote it through various ways, through local media outlets, social media, public service announcements, websites, and events. The survey will be online through about December the 10th, maybe a little bit longer if we need to. Then, after we collect all of those results and compile them, we'll present them to County Council at their winter planning retreat in early 2000 as they prioritize the goals for the county for 2021. So what can you do? I would like for everybody to go out and, as you are out in the community, please tell your friends and neighbors to go to visionkershaw2030.org and take the survey, click on the survey button, and complete the 2019 survey. Please help us spread the word. Thank you for your time and support for Vision Kershaw 2030 and toward making Kershaw County a great place in 2030 for all of us and for generations to follow. Thank you, and I will attempt to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paula. Comments from staff? Mr. Tucker.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scarborough. Appreciate all that you do, you and the team. Quick question, are we going to have some hard copies available of the survey, or will it strictly just be online?
We will have some copies. I don't know exactly where we'll put those. Maybe at some libraries, we did that one year, maybe here at the Planning Department.
Okay.
But yes, there will be some.
Because I know there'll be some folks that ask that question, can I just get a hard copy? And there's certain groups that I know that I'm with or dealing in that we probably can be a little bit more participative if we're able to lock them down and get them to fill them out right on the spot versus waiting for them to go online.
Okay.
Other comments?
We can get those.
Yeah. Other comments? This is great stuff. It keeps the survey alive, and it shows that these private citizens are driving this feedback. Of course, council has other ways to get comments back, so when we get the comments from the surveys from the core group, council also have had chances in the districts to try out ideas going forward on their own. This is not to preclude that, this is to provide a little bit of focus that's generated by the vision itself. That's terrific stuff. Thank you very much, Paula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, that's been a very full first hour of this. Keep charging on. We move now to approval of minutes dated 13 August. They're at tab B. Can we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the minutes. That has been written by Ms. Mary, and thank you, Ms. Mary.
Mr. Tucker, thank you. A second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. Discussion, I do have a point to make. The point is, is I left during the last meeting, right after, right during the administrator's briefing, and Ms. Mary has made a slight addendum that may require a vote. I think technically it could. There is a single page, a piece of paper on your desk that shows where the administrator's briefing begins, as a note in parentheses, that Chairman Burns departed on business and gave it the gavel to the able hands of Mr. Tucker. I extemporize a little bit, but I'm willing to go technical on this and take an amendment to the minutes if you wish. Do we have such a motion?
This is what you want in?
Yep.
Yes, sir. I'll make the amendment to the motion.
Okay, Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second there.
Second from Mr. Conell, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote on the amendment, then we'll vote on the minutes as amended. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's amended, and now we moan on the edge, on the minutes as amended. This is really hard for me, Mary. All those in, I think, all those in favor, let's signify by raising your hand. And we, it's unanimous, and those minutes are amended and approved as amended. And with that, now we move into a series of ordinances, the first of which is a second reading of an ordinance by Kershaw County Council regarding a conveyance to Bethune Rural Water. Over to you, Mr. Carpenter, bring us through this.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for second reading an ordinance. The gist of the ordinance is that many years ago, the county, in support of a grant, acquired a small piece of land that Bethune Rural Water used as a pump station. They are requesting that we transfer that title over to them so they can secure additional grants for work on the property. Council previously approved this unanimously on first reading.
I'll be happy to take a motion to approve. So move. Mr. Snodgrass, a second?
Second there.
From Mr. Conell, any discussion? We discussed this last time, it's pretty straightforward. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify, and it's unanimous, everybody. We move now to four different votes. Now, I'm going to summarize this very quickly, on two economic development projects, which remain unnamed by a corporation or company, but have a code name. And it's been asked by the administrator that we move briefly into an executive session to provide an update before we vote. So I'd like to, right now, to have a motion to move into executive session and come back out and address these four items. So can I have a motion to move into executive session with our economic development officer, legal, and administrator? Anybody else, Vic? Nope? Okay, I got a first from Mr. Bozard, a second?
Second with clarity, Ms. Chairman. This is for a contractual matter that we're going into?
It's a contractual matter on economic development project. Thank you for clarification. I have a second from you, Mr. Tucker.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, any discussion?
Excuse me. I don't think it's contractual.
It's an economic development.
Economic development?
So, yeah, if you restate.
No, it is contractual.
It is. Most certainly it is.
A fee and lieu tax contract.
Yes.
Yeah, well, if we approve this, it'll go into a signature for me as a senior official. But thank you, Mr. Jones, for clearing that up, and I think we'll have further discussions. But I think we're clear, we'll come back out, and we'll begin to vote on each of these four items, okay?
Yeah, well, and just so the folks know, I mean, we're going to executive session, but what will be discussed will eventually be disclosed, just at this moment, it just has to be behind closed doors. Just so everyone understands that, you know, we're fully transparent.
Very good, David, that's excellent. Other points? All right, let's move to a vote, and we'll go into executive session if it's approved. All those in favor signify, and it's unanimous, and we are moving into executive session briefly. Thank you. We have a first from Mr. Tucker, we have a second from Mr. Snodgrass, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Bozard.
Mr. Bozard, you're about the same age. Mr. Bozard, unless they want to fight about it. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and we are out of executive session. We move now with the agenda, with a series of ordinances, the second of which is a first reading entitled only of an ordinance authorizing, let's see, where am I, an ad valorem taxes agreement for Project Sweeper. Mr. Carpenter, would you like to take the lead on this, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight first reading entitled only, as you've already said, an ordinance authorizing the execution delivery of the fee and lieu agreement between Kershaw County and a project that is currently known as Project Sweeper.
And we have a first to place this into action, please.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we have first reading entitled only on Project Sweeper.
Okay, very good. Mr., a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner, discussion. Mr. Carpenter, just a little bit for the community, please, go ahead.
Yes, sir. A fee and lieu agreement is an agreement between the county and an industry wherein the terms are negotiated with the industry that result in generally the changing of an assessment ratio. The state of South Carolina sets its assessment for industry at 10 and 1/2%. State law allows you to lower it to different percentage points based on the amount of the investment, and also allows you to negotiate with them their property tax rate as well. That's what this ordinance would do.
Very good. Questions, comments? Saying this is in title only, correct?
Yes.
And it's an ordinance on Project Sweeper, but I think we can go to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell. All those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain due to the fact that after our discussion executive session, I just don't think enough information's been provided to the public or myself. Thank you.
Okay, we have one abstention, and with that, it passes six to one. With that, we go to a first reading now on item number three, entitled only of an ordinance authorizing an ad valorem tax agreement on Project Wildcat. First, I ask Mr. Carpenter to explain.
Mr. Chairman, similar or the same as the previous ordinance, this is title-only ordinance for a fee and lieu between Kershaw County and an entity referred to in this case as Project Wildcat.
Very good, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second there.
From Mr. Conell, discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass, go ahead.
I do want to add, and I should have said this on the first one, that I hope everyone understands that, so we're dealing with, we're dealing with corporations who are, at this point, don't want to reveal some of their plans, and so since this is broadcast on YouTube and other areas, it puts their product in jeopardy, so no one is trying to, and I'm not insinuating that Mr. Jones thinks that, but by no means, this is just me wanting to be clear, that as we go through second and even in third reading, that there will be more information that gets released as the company, corporation, gives us the permission to release that. It's one of those things that if we release it, the company will say, see you later, you know, don't worry about it. So I just want everyone to understand that there's nothing, there's nothing up here to hide, it's just we are, our hands are tied as far as how much we can disclose, but I can assure you that before it gets a third reading and final vote, that everything that needs to be disclosed will be disclosed on both of these issues.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. Mr. Jones.
Absolutely. My abstention was not a vote for or against. I am for economic development, I am for pushing this county forward. I am for pushing this county forward. My vote was Jimmy Jones did not feel like there was enough information provided to the public and himself, the questions that I had. That's why I abstained on this. It was not a vote against or a vote for. I abstained. So anyway, thank you so much.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Cornell.
Not to mention the phrase entitled only was used. That means there's literally no content or text for us to actually vote on. It's just a title. So as Mr. Snodgrass said and others, we'll get more information that we can actually vote on, the words on the page. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. If we, and I'll just close it out and move to a vote, is if we didn't move it this way entitled only, we would not make the timings that are driven by
Yeah, ponytail.
federal and corporate industry processes, which we merely stand here to facilitate. And we only stand to gain by doing it this way, to allow their processes to have a signal of support of our direction on where this is going with respect to jobs and economic development for our county. And it sends a signal when the county here agrees, hopefully unanimously, to do that. So we, we are, we are sending a signal tonight, and a little later on, we'll, as Mr. Snodgrass said, we'll get into the details. This is the way it's been done for years and years, for the lifetime of every councilman here. And it's sensical, legal, ethical, and expeditious, and shows our support for business. With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And I see that it's unanimous. Let's move to a series of resolutions. The first of which is identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Project Sweeper. It's now into the resolution mode. Mr. Carpenter, can you lead us through that?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, the way the laws in South Carolina are written, these resolutions are required to, to fill a legal need. And no details are different for this project or the next one. Then will be covered under their ordinance itself. But state law does require a, a resolution to be passed for this. So we have in front of you tonight, for your approval, a resolution to identify the projects in order to satisfy the requirements of state code.
And I would note before I ask for a motion that we've already passed an ordinance entitled only on this very same Project Sweeper. I ask for a motion now to approve the resolution on Project Sweeper.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the resolution on Project Sweeper.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bozard. Discussion?
Again, just wanna reiterate, just for the record...
Excuse me, did you ask to be recognized?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Snodgrass.
Mr. Chairman. All right. Just, again, just wanna reiterate the, just kinda the nature of the business that we're doing here, and that there's nothing that we're hiding here. But at this point, then, what I've been told, I feel comfortable moving this forward through, through first reading, but as we, as this rolls out, public press, you'll, you'll understand what's, what's happening before we get to the final vote.
Other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the county council. Let me just say this, I will abstain once again on this due to the same reasons that I stated earlier. And it sounds like to me that a couple of comments that were made, that if we're not unanimous and I'll go along to get along, that we're sending a bad message. No, I think that if you don't, you know, I had a person just send me a text a while ago and said, "Jimmy, good luck tonight." No, Jimmy, not good luck. You always vote with your heart and what you think is right regardless of the pressure from the majority. And I honestly feel the way I felt when I abstained. I'm not voting against, but I'm not voting for tonight. I abstained for those reasons. And no one on this county council will intimidate me to cause me or pressure me by indicating any kind of message we're sending by the way I present myself or what I represent on this county council. I work for the people of Kershaw County, not politicians and bureaucrats. And I, and I will never, ever forget that. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the county council.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you. With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor so signify by raising your hand. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Cornell. Thank you. All those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I abstained for the same reasons as the first.
Mr. Jones abstains. With that, we move to the, it passes, Mary, six to one. And now to item number two, a resolution identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Project Wildcat. Do you wanna go to the ordinance, I mean, to the resolution itself on the screen there? Is that it? While you're bringing that up, I'll have Mr. Carpenter explain, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you the ordinance, the resolution itself for Project Wildcat. As you can see on the screen, this is the information that was provided to the county by the company itself. And so you can see there that, again, they provided this information to us.
Thank you very much. It's tab B for those who are following me along. Can we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Gardner and Mr. Tucker, seconding. Discussion? Seeing there is none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And Mary, it's unanimous. We move now to new business. Item number one is the bid for Watery River Park Phase One. It's at tab F. Now, can you move forward to that, please? And there it is on the screen. To you, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as you recall, with the master plan of the river park, Phase One, which was approved by council, the current budget calls for the creation of a concrete walking trail, a floating canoe and kayak launch, entranceway to a US-1, and landscaping. Bids were submitted, nine were received. The low bidder, Contractor Services of Kershaw, out of Kershaw, South Carolina, for $383,185, which is less than the amount that council has allocated.
Very good. So can we have a motion to approve the recommendation of staff?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Discussion?
I just, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, please, Mr. Tucker.
I just wanna say, Vic, thanks. It's always good to see these bids come in when you got local folks that's bidding in on the bottom and getting awarded our great tax dollars. So appreciate what you and staff does, but I really appreciate the contractors right here being aggressive bidders.
Absolutely. Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Bozard. And by the way, on the screen, there's a diagram of what they're doing.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir.
Can you outline a little bit, please, what we're paying for in these walking trails? How much concrete, how long, and so forth? And also on that floating kayak launch?
Yes, sir. The walking trail will be 2,112 linear feet. It'll be eight feet wide and four inches thick. The canoe and kayak launch will be a floating launch to allow people, it'll be a dock system so they can put in and put out from the river right there. Obviously, because it's floating like over the boat landing, it will move up and down. And it'll also include the removal of the current destroyed boat launch that is there.
Is this going in where the present boat dock is now?
This is going in where the old boat dock is.
That's what I mean.
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's correct. Yes, sir.
In place where it is now, are you gonna take that concrete out and put this in?
Yes, sir.
I don't like that idea. How are we gonna launch boats? We still going to the other side of the road? If they want to launch boats there, we'd have to do something different?
Boats will still be across the road at the boat launch. Yes, sir.
Okay. How about this entrance sign? What are we talking about on an entrance sign?
Talking about a sign that will let the public know that's there. It's a sign that when council makes a decision on a name for it, would have the name of the park on it as well. But most of that work is really gonna be working with DOT to get the entranceway safety with DOT US-1, so you have a safe entrance and egress for the citizens.
Actually, right now, this entrance sign is not in this package.
No, sir, an entrance sign is, is part of what is, is going to be built, but...
How can you build something you don't know what it is?
Once a name is assigned to it, then the name will be put on the, on that part. You can add the name to the sign, or to the entranceway, I should say. The entranceway is not just a sign. The entranceway is the, the access and the egress, the turn lanes, the safety mechanisms is the bulk of what that is. Landscaping, it's a sign.
Well, you're telling me something different. I'll put here. Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Chairman? Now, Mr. Cornell.
Two things, Mr. Carpenter. First, I got a call from a contractor, had questions about the bid process. It was not one that obviously received this bid, but he was just curious and wanted to make sure that all the particulars were followed in the bid process. Have we reviewed that and made sure that it, that they were?
Absolutely, sir. Every, every bid was consistent with the county policies. One, every bid that was considered was. One bid was not considered because it was not consistent with the bid policies.
Okay, maybe that was one they referenced. And then also, on the launch, we've heard issues in the past about the flow of the river hitting the bridge underneath, or hitting the boat launch underneath the bridge. So people sometimes feel like it's dangerous, how their boat is oriented underneath the bridge because the flow's pushing you into the dock. I wanna make sure on this orientation, it looks like you can launch from the front side or on the opposite side of the flow downriver, and maybe it's a little bit better situation for people. Is that? Yeah, okay. No, you got a laser there?
Yeah.
Well, just this, if I can be like Jimmy for a sec. Yeah, so, point down, so the pylons will be on the front side and the back side, and that floats, and then you'll have a floating walkway that rotates up and down? Okay. All right, I think that accounts for, for that issue that people raised in the past about the bridges, the boat launch is right underneath the bridge.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, it's Mr. Snodgrass.
If I remember right, and I think, I think Ben probably just described that, but this, this dock is designed to, to avoid what we're talking about, right? It's, I mean, if I remember right, previous discussions, it was a specially designed dock that
Right.
it helps boaters or kayakers get in easier, easier without issuing, getting at the bridge. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And then, and then also, I don't know where we are in the process of this. I do wanna make sure that we do take Commander Fuller from the American Legion. I, I wanna make sure that we at least take his consideration seriously as we, as we get into that. So I just wanna go ahead and vocalize my support for exploring that.
Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Jones, go right here.
Would you take my laser? Would you take my laser, please? Would you? We're talking about putting concrete. Where, now exactly where's the concrete going?
The concrete will be on the walking trail. Roughly in that area throughout the, it'll be roughly in this area of the park.
And that is the floodplain?
Parks and Forest, yes, sir.
Yes. So we'll go put concrete in the floodplain?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me just ask another question procedurally. During duck season, I see one of the best duck hunters in the world here tonight. You wanna self-identify there, Paul? But, you know, we've had complaints about closing it on the Patriot Landing side, which is a DNR responsibility. I see here the indication that the road may join the two parks, Patriot Landing and our own Watery Park. Is that the case here?
Not in Phase One. At some point in the future, it's possible.
Okay.
But that's, would merely be something down the road that's possible to be.
Right.
DOT has not ruled it out, but we've done no actual planning for that.
Yeah, to emphasize, as David was suggesting, DNR controls the keys to that. And now we'll have some harmony, it'll have to be worked out in the future. Of course, you know that already. The second was that during the hurricane, we shut the park down, and, and that was for good reason. And we have a good system, I think, of notifying the public through our Facebook and other ways to do that. So the hours are clear. What about during the construction phase? What impact will that have on when this thing is open, please? Shane?
Actually, we feel that it'll be, have little impact because we are actually hosting an event on October the 5th, that's Saturday, October the 5th, which is a touch of truck event. We'll be plenty capable of working around any construction that's going on there without, you know, anything happening or going wrong there. So we feel that it'd be very limited, I guess you could say, interruption.
Roger. Thank you. Any further questions? Yeah, Alan?
Yes. Mr. Carpenter, Shane, on that dock that launches the kayaks, have we got a height on that thing? Is it up there on the hundred-year plane or something that this thing's not gonna float off when the water comes up and floods the property over there or something? Are we taking that into consideration?
Well, I, I don't have the plans right in front of me, but I can, I can definitely get that information for you. I do know that this, this particular dock is designed similar to the one adjacent to the property at the boat landing. So that's, they're using the same type technology with, that they used on that, that same dock.
I was mainly concerned about the heights of it.
Right. Well, I will get, I can get that information for you. I just don't have that in front of me.
Okay, I don't really need that information. I just wanna make sure we make those poles high enough that it won't float off there in high.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. I think we can move to a vote. All those in favor? I'm sorry, Ben, go ahead.
One question, thank you very much. I just wanna make sure, does the estimate include thinning out of the brush, shrubbery in those, the vines, that kind of stuff along the walkway on the river's front?
A little bit, yes, sir.
I'm not talking about just a halo of, you know, we cut through and just have a walkway and you can't see the river.
We're trying to, to maintain still the trees, the feel of that property, so that you're not looking at a wholesale cutting of trees or anything like that. There will be thinning out. Ultimately, there'll be a boardwalk as well alongside in future phases if council chooses to pursue it. And so part of the thought is to maintain as many trees, but invasive vines, things like that, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not talking about trees. The trees are absolutely beautiful, but shrubs, vines, that kind of stuff, I would hope our contractor to understand that part of the idea is to increase visibility of the river when you're walking and not just in the middle of a jungle, as it were.
Right. And I guess you're, you're referring to the undergrowth.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's probably some kudzu and other...
Right. And the same holds true to the, the entrance, you know, with the landscaping there to clean it up and give us some, some really good landscaping so that it increases the visibility as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bozard? I'm sorry, you raised your hand first.
Well, what you see right now is, is the, in this first phase is the first part of that walking trail. Um, we also have diagrams that shows that what we intend to do in the second phase, which would be to, uh, connect on the upper part of that property as well to, um, move that, uh, trail all the way around.
They take the walking trail now, how they gonna get back?
I'm sorry?
Turn around and come back the same trail? Is that what you're planning?
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be a complete loop, is basically what you're asking. Cause up and, up into the other property in the top right, it'll, it'll loop all the way around and come back.
But it's gonna tie into the road, Mr. Bozard. So the upper part of that is the end of the first loop. So the, the concrete trail that Danny's showing, and then the drive at the top, the road itself is closed at that loop.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I understand what you're asking now. The, the road will serve as part of the trail right now in this first part of the phase.
I got you, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jones, you had your hand up? Uh, Mr. Jones?
Ye- yes, thank you. So once again, we're gonna pour concrete in a flood plain?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, other comments? Mr. Snodgrass?
Uh, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Shane, will, will this be accessible to bicyclists or is this kind of a walking thing only?
No, sir. It's not a bicycle.
Okay, are there any plans in any future, future phases to make this a place where people might, would mountain, or bike?
Not that I'm aware of, sir. It'd be, just size the park. It doesn't have enough-
Gotcha.
And, and people coming in now, bicycles generally don't work well in tandem with hikers or walkers.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Carpenter, when it rains, when it stops, is concrete dry?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I-
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
It's in a flood plain, Mr. Tucker, and it floods.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Gardner?
Sir? I think if you ask most places like San Antonio and Columbia and Savannah and Augusta that have river parks, they'll all tell you they all flood because they're by a river. I don't think this is unique to that. Uh, as much rain as we've had this past year, I don't remember seeing that park flooded one time.
Oh, it hasn't?
So, uh, not, not out to the extent out in the middle of the park. What I've seen out there is the water that's actually falling from the sky. I've seen the river up to-
Sign.
-the, the sign and that, but I haven't seen it flooded. And if it didn't flood this year, I don't know that it ever will. I know it has, and it, and it probably will. Uh, but I think if you ask anybody who has a river park that's by a river, they'll tell you it floods. That's why we'll, we'll use, uh, steel and, and concrete and things that won't wash away, and that's the whole idea behind it. So when it does flood, you spray it off and you keep on keeping on. So I think that's, uh, part of the design. So I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
All right. One quick, last, last comment. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gardner, for that. Appreciate it. You know, I tell you one thing that we, you mentioned some other counties, if their river parks are successful, and you're, you're probably correct on that. But I tell you what, we've got them because we've got two. Camden's got one right across the river within a mile. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Uh, very good. I call for the vote. All those in favor, uh, signify by raising your hand for this, uh, project. Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Connel, and those opposed. Uh, Mr. Jones, it passes six to one. We move the next item, which is, uh, item number two, uh, an All-American City logo on water towers on the agenda by Mr. Bozard. There's no attachment here, but let's, uh, hear from you, Mr. Bozard.
I appreciate it, thanks very much.
Do you wish to have, make a motion or open for discussion?
I was getting ready to do that.
All right, right ahead.
I'll make a motion that we open this up for discussion and, uh, possible vote.
All right. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second for the-
No, Mr. Connel, seconds for discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Bozard.
Thank you very much. I've been in contact with all the four water towers, and all of them has agreed to let us use their tower for, put our America, All-American City on their towers. Mr. Boz is getting a letter up that we're gonna send to them that they can back it up in Lutter. And Camden has already agreed to do this. Their council has approved the money, and, uh, they were gonna pay for it themselves. I was traveling to, uh, Florence one day, and I looked up and saw the tower over at Darlington, and it was a paid commercial on their tower, but they were advertising the race over there. So I got to wondering, and I talked with several of you about, uh, getting donations to put these up there. We need $40,000 according to Camden, Mel Pearson, and according to Mike Hancock over at Lugolf Water. It takes about $10,000 to get that decal on the water towers. And I've been suggested that we put them on the most obvious water towers. I've already made contact with several different businesses throughout, and they have already said that, yes, that sounds like a pretty good idea, and they would probably donate to it. Now, my question to y'all is, do we want to push this anymore? Do we want to go ahead and do this and get advertisements for it, or donations from these businesses? Or what do we want to do? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Tucker?
Uh, Mr. Bozard, I got a couple of questions, because I think I missed this discussion, um, last month, a month before last, um, in July. Um, $40,000 is what's needed, so $30,000 is actually, because you said Camden's gonna pay for their own.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, who's driving this fundraiser? Is that gonna be something that you're gonna head up? Is staff is gonna be charged with this, or is there gonna be a committee?
I had to talk with plans, I mean, uh, um, Play Committee, Play Foundation.
Okay, okay.
Talked with them about it. We have not sat down, I've talked to them on the phone. And from what they tell me, they're willing to help out, yes.
And the reason I'm asking that, because if you've got everybody in agreeance, I don't think it's fair that you fundraise and only come up with half the money, and you only do half or one-third or two-thirds, and not all four. And, um, that would be, um, some stipulations that I would like to see for my support on this project, that we make sure that we fundraise for all four.
All four, that's what my plan was. In fact, I told Mel, Mr. Pearson-
All three.
Uh, well, be four. Camden, Lugolf-
You just told me they were paying for their own.
Cassett and Bethune.
You just told me they were paying for their own.
Uh, yeah, but-
So why am I fundraising to pay Camden back?
In fairness to them, I figured that if we could get the money for three, we could get it for four. But Mel said either way, whether we got it and paid them back or not, they were still going on with their project.
Okay.
I'd like to see us do $40,000 and give the city of Camden back their ten. Take all ours.
Uh, other comments? Uh, I'd like to ask you, Al, to, a further explanation of what the Bethune Water Tower is doing. They, uh, have to build a structure, sandblast it and redo it because, uh, it's, uh, having a lot of difficulty in Bethune. And in talking to the mayor and to, uh, Mr. Don Witham, two very fine gentlemen, they say that's gonna cost over a quarter of a million dollars. So they don't have the money to do that. So why should we apportion money for a project that may take some years for them to get money for?
Maybe Mr. Tucker's right. Maybe it is only three then.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And then the other piece is, I'd, I'm certainly welcoming the pride that everybody has and what's been achieved here, and to advertise it. And Camden's willing to self-fund, which is proper for them as a county seat, to provide some sort of sign of, you know, pride for our county. Um, I'm wondering about Elgin and Lugolf Elgin Water, uh, if they don't share in that pride with us or not. And they should self-fund, why not?
Well, they say, they told me, and I think you wasn't there, they don't have the money.
I see, okay, thank you.
That's what they told me.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, questions? Yeah, Mr. Connel?
Just a few comments. Um, in order to make a decision on this, I'd have to first know the actual return, uh, and the value that might be provided, which would include a quote, um, and who's doing the work. If city, I mean, who actually puts signs on? Is it, is it the municipality, Camden itself, or is-
There's a company out of Georgia that does this.
Okay, well, I would want to see a quote from them to figure it out. How long does that sign last up there? Like, if you look at, uh, if you look at billboards, they have a material that'll last three months, and they have a material that'll last six months or longer. And then after that, to get greater duration, you have to go to digital. Do we have any idea how long that would last up there?
I've got no idea, brother.
Okay, and then-
I tell you, that one on that water tower over at Darlington's been there over 15 years.
So it's just painted on?
Yeah, these are actual decals, not paint.
Okay. Unless it's painted on, and it's a certain type of paint, they may actually be replacing it from time to time in the exact same location. Um, and also, in order to understand value, you could look at a traffic count and figure out, I mean, this is really a marketing effort, if anything, to try and figure out, you know, how many eyes would see this, and, and it would appeal to, uh, folks in Kershaw County or those that pass through and say, oh, that's an All-American place, you know, I want to be part of that. Um, you'd be surprised at, uh, how you can actually grab eyes in various ways. I see our economic development, uh, assistant back there who's nodding, because it's all about grabbing eyes and how many people are driving by this particular area. The money might be better spent, even if the county was gonna apportion it in an, in an area where, uh, you have more eyes driving by. So I'd be interested to know that, too. And overall, it's just a marketing effort. But at this point, I couldn't support it because I just don't have enough information.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Gardner?
If, uh, if we're the ones driving this, I don't know why, that if we couldn't partner with the Play Foundation or whoever and have them raise 15,000 and us pay 15,000, take 15,000 out of reserves, if we're going to drive this, I think we should come up with part of the cost. Uh, you know, it's, it's celebrating Kershaw County, and we represent Kershaw County. So I would say that let's, let's raise half the money and let's find, which I think we can find, $15,000 out of our budget or out of reserves or wherever-
It can do anything.
-to do that, so.
Take it out of y'all's travel fund.
Okay, very good. I, I, what I'm gonna try to sum up and then see if I got it right is, there's a sense of gratitude to the city of Camden and, and their expression of community pride for the county and the city, and that's great. Uh, there's some questions about Bethune. There's some questions about the nature of the cost and the durability of the product. And I'd like to see it formulated in some way that we bring it back before council with a, with a firm proposal. Al, is that, am I reading that correctly from each of you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just more information so we can have more, um, to go off of, on who's committed, who's not, and what's the plan.
Yep.
If I get y'all's approval on this tonight, I will contact the Play Foundation and say, hey, let's go work on this and get it done. Until we formulate something, we don't have a plan, and that's why I'm asking.
Well, see, we have the Bethune question that was really large, which, uh, so we need to get some more detail there. I just suggest we bring that back in. Uh, yeah, Ben?
One other comment, um, from Mr. DeBoz, perhaps to confirm or clarify. To the extent we needed to vote on something and somebody wanted to do a private fundraiser to make this happen, I think the only thing we can really do at this point is give them permission to use our intellectual property and say, you know, this is a trademark that we received, uh, authority from the All-American City, uh, convention or association to use. And, you know, if you can raise the funds and put it on a water tower and get the consents, you have our permission to use our intellectual property. Um, but really, I think that's all we can do at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's correct. Someone's gonna have to be responsible for raising the money, have a plan, but all you can do is give them permission to use it. Entities that are gonna, is their towers.
Yep. Uh, uh, Mr. Snodgrass, sir?
Uh, well, I, I think it's all been, it's all been said, but I, I'm having trouble. I mean, I'm all about, I'm, I'm a marketing guy, and I'm all about, um, putting the message out there, but I don't know, I don't have any concrete. I love to see paperwork on, you know, what are we, what are we getting, and what's our investment? I mean, I know you said 40,000, but, you know, if we can get sponsorships, then that kind of changes the whole conversation, you know? And do these sponsors, do they, do they want their logo on, on the tower along with the, the All-American County logo? I mean, that, that changes a lot of things. Um, so are, are we, so Mr. Boz, are you asking us to release 40,000 for this tonight? Are you asking us to just support exploring it further and support the Play Foundation looking at sponsorships?
That's exactly what I'm doing. I'm asking to go forward with it and get the Play Foundation to work with us and raise in the money.
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Sir?
I didn't raise my hand.
All right, so you don't want to talk? Okay.
Well, actually, I will say something since you recognize me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of county council. I know you didn't want to leave me out, and I appreciate that. Uh, you know, I, I think the All-American City is a great thing to have. I, I guess my question is, and, and I go back to something that Mr. Connel said at one of the last meetings we had, I think it might have been the last meeting, that he really supported the fact of private donations doing that, you know, um, because it is a lot of money. And, and then again, too, I, I guess, how long, how long are we awarded the All-American City? Is it one year, two years?
Forever.
Forever?
Forever.
Okay, so therefore the sign would be up there forever?
Yes, sir.
But I think private donations is the way to go.
I would be opposed to putting ad, advertising on it.
No, no advertising on it.
Okay.
They get a recognition letter from us, and that's it.
Mr. Chairman, because I'm a last-
Yeah, Jimmy, go ahead.
This is just my thought, my opinion, and of course, you know, I know you guys have yours, too, and I appreciate it and respect it. When we talk about economic development, listen, with my experience, I think what drives economic development is the bottom dollar, being loo. I think they could really care less about a lot of the other things, but I, but bottom line is, I think having this All-American City award is really, really a good thing when it comes to us trying to get grants and things like that. And, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Jimmy. Other comments? Well, I'm not sure if we formulated a vote yet. I'd raise the suggestion that we bring it in in a hard copy, uh, the next meeting. Uh, Al, or, or you want to try to formulate a, a vote and a motion?
Well, I'd like to. We could, we could do that. But I'd like to see us say, yeah, we need to, want to go ahead and do it, or no, we don't want to go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, very good. Sam?
Um, Mr. Bozard, with all due respect, I think you've got the consensus around this table that everybody's interested in what you're trying to do. Don't force us to vote tonight versus doing a little bit more homework and bringing it back. Um, so, so we could, so we could all be, um, on the same team. That's just my intake from what I've heard up here. It's your motion, and you do what you want to do with it, but-
I can do that. I just need some guidance. What, what else information do you want?
Yeah. Uh, well, for me, it's Bethune. That's, you know, a quarter of a million dollars. That's a big deal. Uh, uh, Mr. Snodgrass?
I just think personally, I think we're at a point where you, you need to get with, with staff and, and the foundation and bring, because I can't vote on anything until I have a design, and I know what the design looks like that's going on, on the logo, uh, or going on the water tower, who's putting it up and, and all those things. So I, I feel like you're still in a, I mean, I like where you're trying to go, but I feel like you're, you're in a phase where it's not, I don't think it needs to come before council yet, okay? And so, I mean, for that, if it does come to a vote, I will be voting no, but that's not, not because I'm against water towers or, or logos, uh, but I just, I don't have a whole lot of information.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Tucker, just to clarify, when you said all of us are interested, the, the only interest I would have in it is if it was privately funded. I, I will, I do not support any public dollars going into the water towers by any match or anything else.
And, and by all means, I didn't state where we all stood, but I, I did hear there was interest up here amongst the seven of us.
Okay. Uh, I think you've got a pretty boatload of, of information there, Al.
I will bring it back up next-
Okay, for a vote?
Next time.
Right.
I will try to get, uh, Play Foundation to give us their expertise on it, so.
Very good.
But as far as the decal itself, in talking with Mel Pearson at the city, in talking with Mike Hancock, they both have already investigated into who can do it and the price. The price I gave you came from them. It's $10,000 a logo, a tower, okay? There's a company out of Georgia that puts them up. They do this all over the world. They put signs on water towers. That's what the business they're in. So I will get you some more information.
I'm with you. I just need it on peppers.
Yep. Thank you very much. I think you've got it, and I'd like to move on to the next item. Thank you very much. That was a very good discussion. And then item number three is in the same vein of, uh, community pride, uh, Clean Community Commission Officer Grant. Uh, Mr. Jones, uh, you, this is your motion, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of county council. I did put this on the agenda, and, of course, let me make the motion first.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, apologize.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Kershaw County support the goal of our Clean Community Commission in obtaining $20,000, a two-year litter grant from Palmetto Pride, and that the administrator work with our Clean Community Commission to utilize existing county resources and manpower in an effort to maximize the potential impact of that grant if it is awarded.
Second?
Second from Mr. Snodgrass, uh, discussion. Jimmy, do you want to lead?
I think it's all, I think it's self-explanatory, Mr.-
Good.
No question.
Uh, let me just do some housekeeping. Jimmy, and, and for Mr., uh, Mr. Snodgrass, would you be willing to, we take the paper we have from Wanda and also provide that to the media as well, and enter that into the record? Is that okay?
Everything should be entered into the record.
Okay, good. All right, and Mayor, if you can provide that to the media, that would be great.
Yes, my question is, why would it not? Why would you even ask me that question?
They haven't been provided it yet. Okay, uh, go ahead, Mr. Gardner.
Um, first question, is this grant renewable? Like, is it just a two-year grant, or is it renewable?
Come on up, hey, Wanda, come on up.
Or is it renewable? Can we renew this grant?
At the moment, it is a two-year program. However, Palmetto Pride has explained to me that it's possible it will be extended. They can't promise it at this point, but their goal is to have this extended for maybe even two more years.
Okay, second question, is this something that we would have to take if it is not renewed? Is this something that we would pick up, the $20,000 as a council and renew or put it into our budget if this was not renewed?
And you're asking? That would be for Mr. Carpenter to answer.
Um, yeah, Mr. Gardner, what we have done in discussing this with the Clean Community Commission is, uh, we have proposed, rather than hiring a new person to fill a position and creating one for a new person, that we, uh, repurpose an existing county employee to fill this position. Therefore, that would not incur any additional manpower expenses to the county, and this, these funds would then be used to support that officer and that office in better educating and better communicating of the goals of this program. So that's what we have, have proposed, and, and they've been very supportive of that idea.
Okay. Clarifying, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Tucker here. Uh, Jimmy, I think that was essentially what your motion was to correct.
It was.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker, go ahead.
Okay, so, so I want to make sure I'm clear, because $20,000 is a part-time position. So, um, the county's gonna pick up the other half, and this may, this is gonna be a full-time position, or they're gonna do part of their duties for the Clean Community Commission underneath this grant, and then the other part for the ca, I just want clarity, that's all.
Thank you, I, I wasn't there.
Oh, no, it was clarified.
The, the grant, though it says it's for a part-time position, we've clarified that
underneath this grant, and then the other part for the county, I just want clarity, that's all.
Thank you, I, I wasn't clear. The, the grant, though it says it's for a part-time position, we've clarified that the funds can be used to support a litter program. Therefore, the position we have is a full-time position already on the county's payroll, but it is, it's something we can repurpose, um, that position to get a significant, if not full, amount of effort on litter, therefore no additional costs to the county, therefore these funds would be used to support that office.
Okay, follow-up. And, and, and I know this is not gonna happen with you, but I want to say it just for the record. We don't want to get in any violations on the grant side of not providing what they need for that grant, or the monies that we're receiving, and, um, want to make sure that they're getting what they need to fulfill and be proficient and efficient at doing their job. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out. Not that you can't handle that, you handle a lot of things.
And that's fully understood and, and thankfully, we've got a very good working relationship with county staff and the Clean Community Commission, so the communication is very strong back and forth.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we have Mr. Bozard, sir.
One quick question, please, ma'am, uh, Mr. Carpenter. This is for a part-time, what about a vehicle or something like this?
Current position already has a vehicle. We already have a vehicle for this.
Already got it.
Yes, sir.
Let's go with the grant.
Yeah. Ben, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, Ms. Wanda, for doing the legwork to get this together. Um, I did hear the term or the word obligations mentioned a couple of times on what the grant requires, what are those?
I'll try to explain as best I can.
Yes, ma'am.
We have an obligation to report to Palmetto Pride our progress, um, how we're using this particular grant. So it's just basically paperwork that would need to go to Palmetto Pride, showing our progress, how many, um, how many schools he's involved with in education, um, how many tickets are, are cited or warnings are cited, um, that type of thing. They want to see progress, that's basically what they want to see. But it's basically paperwork.
Yeah, well typically grants have a bunch of strings attached to them, that's, that's sort of some of the fewest strings I've heard attached to a grant, so thank you, thank you for finding that one.
It's, it's a wonderful grant.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm.
Yeah, Jimmy, go ahead.
Thank you.
And then I'll get Mr. Snodgrass, go ahead.
Thank you. Let me just say this, that, uh, Mr. Carpenter really worked hard along with, uh, Ms. Wanda. They looked at all the details, they looked at all the requirements, they looked at every angle that you had to go at, and, you know, Mr. Carpenter's very comfortable with the way he's got this set up, and I think this is the best bang for our buck, it's gonna get us a lot with the twenty thousand dollars with minimal strings attached.
Uh, David.
A clarification, is, will this, will this be an officer under code enforcement or would this be a sheriff's deputy?
Code enforcement.
Okay.
Yep. And, uh, I'll just say from my behalf that, that Wanda and the team, uh, many of them are here tonight, others are not, but met with, uh, Ms. Sarah Lyle from the state level at Palmetto Pride, and she drove all the way out here just to see us, right, Wanda? And the sheriff was there and the team was there from code enforcement, and I'll just tell you, we're getting great support at the state level for this thing, so, there you have it. Uh, any further questions? I, I think, yeah, Sammy, sorry.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, uh, Ms. Wanda and the crew, uh, thank you for this, because reading through this gave us several examples on who was doing it through the county, who was doing it through the sheriff's office, um, so it, it came with some references that were, that were good for me and I feel for the others. And, uh, Vic, I would just say for whatever my two cents worth, if, uh, if anybody who, this gets to picking up and we're doing good, because I think that's gonna be real critical on whether it gets renewed or not, um, let, let our county side fall short and let's be all in with them.
Yeah. I, I think I'm ready to move it to a vote. Gentlemen, thank you, Jimmy and everyone for bringing this in, Wanda, particularly you and the team, wow, good work. Uh, with that, we move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and, Wanda, you put a smile on everybody's face, thank you. And with that, we move to item number four, the new business and HVAC equipment and controls contract with the librarian sheriff's office, it's at Tab G and up on the screen. Vic, take us through this.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, council has approved previously in the budget, um, the, um, purchasing of two new HVAC systems, one for the library and one for the sheriff's office. Um, staff is presenting to you tonight, um, two units, um, both trains, um, that are being recommended, that we acquire them through a national purchasing agreement with train. Uh, the main library system would be one hundred and fifty-four thousand nine seventy-nine, and the sheriff's office would be one hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-five.
I'm sure there'll be some questions, but let's have a motion to approve, can we have one?
Make a question, we approve the, uh, bid that's before us for the train, uh, HVACs.
Mr. Tucker, second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass, uh, you want to lead off, Sammy?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question, Vic, Mr. Carpenter, is, um, who's installing?
Train of Columbia will be installing it.
Okay.
The train will be installing it.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure it was clear, because it's, and were they the only ones that we, we bid it with, or they're the only ones on this contract?
It's like state contract.
Okay, okay.
State contract.
Thank you.
And does that, Sammy, also address the issue of competition? I think it does.
Right, that's where I was going, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Uh, other comments? Because we're a competition kind of council here.
Tell us about the warranty and so forth, Mr. Carpenter, and what's gonna happen after the warranty runs out.
Yes, sir. Um, it's covered by one year, full parts and labor warranty, um, the train would cover. After, um, after that year is out, um, then we would have a purchase, uh, or a maintenance agreement, either with train or with someone, but the first year is covered by train. Good question.
Mr. Bozard, you can't stop a train.
The reason I asked this question was, I talked with, um, one of the, uh, bigger Eaton Air Unit people in Kershaw County, and they're not authorized to run this, to work on this machines, that's why I'm asking who's gonna, what's gonna happen when it runs out.
Well, Train of Columbia is authorized, so certainly it could result in them working on theirs, uh, but we would certainly look at all, all, uh, all companies that are authorized and, and try to get the best agreement we can.
Okay.
So anybody who's authorized to work on it, then yes, sir.
Do we issue a service contract to these people for check them yearly? Any of our units or what do we do on these?
Rob?
What we do, my question was, we do have someone coming in yearly checking our units?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, other questions? Hey, thanks for what you do, young man. Uh, with that, let's move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and Vic, you got your train. Uh, with that, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is, I think, council briefs, uh, starting with Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be very brief. Um, I have, I just want to reiterate what, um, Councilman Snodgrass said in reference to Commander Fuller and Post Seventeen. Um, let's, I know we may be a little ahead of the game, Mr. Carpenter and my colleagues, on, uh, what we want to do with the park, but let's stay in communications, um, as we get closer to that segment of, of this, uh, watery park that we have, because I, I think they've made, um, a couple of great recommendations that I'm very interested in. So when we get to those phases, and, and the reason you haven't heard back from Commander, we're not ignoring you, we're just not there yet, but, uh, stay, stay in communications with us. Um, the other one I would ask, um, if you have a sincere, good Christian heart, is to, uh, pray for my baby boy, um, who will be leaving next month to go to Kuwait. This is my first time as a parent, uh, both of my boys have served, one is currently still serving now, very proud of them, but, um, it's different. Um, Mr. Chairman, you've been there, and there's probably others out in the audience. Um, I've gone and left my family three and a half, four months at a time being on a nuclear powered submarine, um, it's different when you leave home and leave mom with them as a parent than your child going out and serving this country. So I ask that you keep he and his family, because he has two young boys, which are two and four, and, um, so they'll, and a wife, so they'll need your prayers as well. That concludes my report, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Gardner?
No report.
Uh, Mr. Bozard, sir.
Thank you. I have several things here. I had the opportunity to visit with some of our local businesses over in Lugolf, and they're highly upset with taking these turning lanes out. I talked with the engineers two weeks ago and asked them what was going on with it, and they told me that it was done in the safety reasons, it was having accidents and everything else, and they were doing them for safety reasons. And, uh, I asked him, one of the engineers yesterday, after talking with a store owner for about thirty minutes, he lost a turn lane in front of his business, and he figured that the people are gonna go on down to the next one, which is quite a ways down, and they won't turn around and come back to him. And, uh, I said, I called the engineers back again and asked them what's the chances of putting, and this was a store owner's recommendation, what putting a stoplight between thirty-four and down at Bowe Road is the next stoplight? And they're looking into that right now. And, um, Mr. Carpenter, I'd like to see, or Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see from this board, maybe we could write a letter to Vincent Sheehan and get some action out of him on these, uh, have we already done that, Mr. Carpenter?
On, on a stoplight?
No, a letter to him expressing our dissatisfaction with what's happening over there and so forth and.
We've not sent a letter to him per se, but we'll, we can send one, yes, sir. We'll send a letter.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item I have is, um, on that trip I made to Washington, I got to talk to Mr. Mulvaney about several things, the traffic study we had at Black River and the traffic study we had at, um, Elgin, and also the water problems that we had here. And, um, his recommendation was to go to our local and state and federal officials. Right now, I have sent a letter to Ralph Norman and Vincent Sheehan to try to get water out of Dove Mills. I've sent a letter to, uh, sent, I mean, Representative Clyburn, to try to get some water at Warren's Crossroads, which is Highway Five up to Shavas Green Road, and turn right or left on Shavas Green Road, there's no water. They running off of wells, and some of the people invited me up about two months back to look at their water. And I don't think I'd even want to wash my clothes in some of it. It's not good to drink and so forth, and that's where I'm standing right now, so I don't, I'm gonna go back up and tell the people that I am trying to work on it and trying to get them some water, but it's gonna take some time. And if any of y'all got any help with Senator Sheehan, or Ralph Norman, or Clyburn, either one, you might, uh, help me out there, because they do have the package that, uh, Mr. Carpenter fixed up for me and, uh, Mary sent out after putting a cubby letter on it for me. We are trying to do something. My last item, Mr. Chairman, is this. In all fairness to Mr. Burns from last month's council meeting, he took a lot of hit on, uh, calling for the motion and then opened it back up. That wasn't his fault. I had my hand up to speak, and he called for the motion, he didn't see my hand. Mr. Jones told him that I had my hand up to talk after Mr. Burns had already called for the motion. So he turned to me and gave me permission to speak. At that time, he opened it back up. Because of the way it was handled, Mr. Burns, I mean, Mr. Jones told him that I had my hand up and he didn't see me. But I think we had a lot of confusion on that issue, when we didn't hear everything that was going on, apparently, that's what happened. And I think, uh, we owe Mr. Burns an apology to the way some of us talked to him, because it was not his fault. He overlooked my hand, it brought his attention that my hand was up, and then he opened it back up, and that's where it got opened back up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Conell?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I had a hearing today in Florence County, and, uh, about a year ago, they had a significant renovation, or actually just rebuilt, a courthouse. And as I entered there and conducted the hearing and represented my client, I realized, um, one, the technology, the security, and then the experience of public access to justice was outstanding on all fronts. Their facility's huge, uh, it'd be much larger than something like that that we would need in Kershaw County, but I'd ask staff and also, uh, this council to consider as we move into the future, uh, public access to justice, the experience that the public has with the courts, which is very important, and then also the security issues, which, uh, any one of our deputies that work over there will tell you, if you're, if you're down in Family Court or various other areas, um, it's not an ideal experience on a building that was, um, built well, but designed many, many years ago. Also, I wanted to say, um, next meeting, look forward to, uh, council, the, an update on the codification project, which is again, in some ways, access to, to justice, I guess. It allows the public to better understand and access online, uh, the codes, ordinances, and, and basically everything that we have in the county that we vote on. A lot of times, people, um, don't get access to that, they don't know necessarily what's going on. We've taken steps through streaming and otherwise for people to have access and better information. And it used to be where you had to come up here and, and pay a fair amount of money to, to run off a copy of the entire code. This, uh, project and hopefully the update that we'll receive, and I think we've identified the third-party contractor who will be able to do the work, um, I think it's just a great step forward for Kershaw County, allow people, uh, including builders, people who want to rezone a property, people, people who want to do something with a property line, to understand what's going on with your property. A lot of people just don't know exactly what they own, uh, they buy sometimes sight unseen. Uh, that's all I have to report, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, Ben. Uh, Mr. Jones, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of county council, I've got a few things here, very quickly. One, excuse me, the most important, Mr. Tucker, thank you, I, I want to thank you, thank your family, thank your son for his service for our country, uh, you're a veteran as well, I'm a veteran, uh, Mr. Bozard, the general, we're all veterans. You know, I probably had the least and more, uh, the least important position in military you could ever have, I was a nobody, but I'm gonna tell you what, I served, and I, I'm glad I served, and, and I'm glad I was able to be a part of that.
Yes, sir.
Being drafted at eighteen, um, it's amazing.
Thank you.
But, but, but your family will be, as well as others, will be in my prayers, and thank y'all so much. Now, uh, something was said about the curbs over in West Watery, I too have received a lot of complaints about it, and I think I sent a message out to everybody on council letting them know I did, with a couple of pictures, but what I would like to do before we send any letters is, uh, let me just say that Danny and Vic have been working very hard on it, they've got a good contact with DOT, I would rather not send a letter, and I think there, I think Danny and Vic are getting some things worked out as far as communication clarification. And let me say this too, we can't change it, we had, this council had nothing to do with that, they came in, they left. Now, the local DOT is gonna have to clean it up, the, I think there were more outsiders here that were doing the actual work, but that would be my suggestion, is that we let Vic and his staff, Danny, kind of continue on, that they've got it on the right track and we don't send a letter unless they so feel we need to send a letter, because I think they're getting some progress done with getting our local, the local crews out there as quick as possible to do whatever they can do to clean up and, uh, complete those projects. Now, uh, Mr. Bozard made some comments about making an apology. Well, I do not make an apology, um, we had, uh, discussed the issue about the employees' insurance, I was very disappointed that it did not pass. Appreciate, Mr. Tucker, appreciate you and, uh, Mr. Gardner, your support and your work on that effort to try to get it passed, but, Mr. Bozard, for you to sit there and, and insinuate that myself or Mr. Tucker owes an apology to anyone in this county council is absolutely absurd, and, um, let me just go on and say something else, too. You called me, you reached out to me two weeks prior to the meeting, you told me you, I didn't reach out to you, I didn't call you, you called me and said you were gonna support the employees' benefits. Well, you know, sir, you retracted that in that open meeting, uh, the chairman kept talking to you, talking to you until he got your mind changed and got your vote, and then he called for the vote, so I make no apologies. But anyway, thank you for your comments. Now, one last item. Following the resignation of our Economic Development Director, I have some thoughts on how to proceed in acquiring new leadership for our Economic Development Department. The majority of Kershaw County council, and I want to make this a fact, I want to make this known, the majority of Kershaw County council will not allow the director of Economic Development position to remain unfilled. Whether or not you think the directions this council has taken while seeking economic development were a huge waste of money, which I do, now we have an opportunity to change course and go in a positive direction. I want to make sure that the search for the new director is done right. I want to make absolutely certain Kershaw County gets the best possible person for the job, and it's not just a job, it involves the future of our county. the job, and it's not just a job, it involves the future of our county. Kershaw County spends a million dollars a year on economic development when you factor in the debt service of our economic development bonds, the maintenance and upkeep of our shell buildings, and salaries for personnel. If we're devoting this much money for economic development every year, then it's only, it only makes sense that we have the best possible professional directing those efforts. Now, if all we do is just post ads, then all we'll get is the same results we've gotten in the past. We need to have the greatest possible exposure to the talented pool of economic development professionals. I believe to ensure the best results, we need to enlist the services of a search firm. Since the director left, when they leave, we can easily pay the search's firm expenses with the remaining funds that we earmark for the director's salary, so no additional or unbudgeted funds will be needed. Kershaw County has a premier workforce development complex, several available buildings, and the Central Midlands mega site. If we don't get the, if we don't get the right person in here, then all we've done and all we're spending is just wasted. Let's get the selection and appointment right. I believe in my heart that the future of Kershaw County is riding on it. Now, having said that, I've got a bombshell I'm going to drop. That ends my comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Snodgrass?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Just a few things I want to make us aware of. I want to thank staff this, in the past month, working with me on some constituent issues that range from anything from animal control, zoning, planning, and recreation, so thank you guys for answering my text at 10 o'clock at night, and even the one that sent Danny and I on a field trip. So I appreciate, and Cam, he was there. Also want to thank the Clean Community Commission for their work, and also ask Vic if, is there a possible way that we could maybe put signage up at the recycle centers, advertising for the litter pickup day, as well as if we go forward with these bags, I mean, it might be worth having these bags available at the recycle centers, you know, as people dropping their trash off, making them available, that might just, would be, to me, it seems like a logical pickup point for that. So maybe something we can think about? What do you, thank you, appreciate it. Also want to recognize Ms. Peggy McLean and for her work with Kershaw County. Ms. Peggy, I don't think your work was a wasted investment. I think it was a good investment, and the fact that you're leaving us to go to the Department of Commerce tells us the kind of quality of individual and employee that you are, and your skill in your workforce. So thank you so much for your work and for what you've done for Kershaw County. We all understand that economic development is not, it's not an exact science. There's an art to it, and so it's not always A, B, and C, black and white, so thank you so much. They're not here anymore, but want to just, again, recognize the ponytail girls, wow, way to make Kershaw County proud. I noticed that on the back of their uniforms is 1 Corinthians 10:30 or 31, which reminds us that all, everything that we do, do it to the glory of God, and I know those girls did that through playing softball and remind us of that as well. And along the sports lines, how about them Camden Bulldogs? Really? Okay. Now, I'm used to getting amens, all right? I just want to...
Amen, sir.
Okay, all right. At least from those of you who represent, if you're on the South River, I get it, I understand.
Wait till wrestling season.
Okay, all right. So just wanted to congratulate the Camden Bulldogs for knocking down some pretty big walls as they went over to Hartsfield, went over to Darlington County, and really decidedly won that, won that game. So, and I'm going to talk about who fed them before that game, but that includes my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll close it out. I just came back from California where I saw the trail party of the 30th National Guard deployed in Southwest Asia. Some of our children are in that group, and they're going off to be about 100 miles away from the country of Iran. That's our National Guard, and they helped us during the recent hurricane. We should be enormously proud, but as all of us have said, Sammy, our prayers go with your family.
Thank you.
And in my family, when we have people deployed, which has been more than 90% of the last 10 years, we read Psalm 91. King David wrote that when he was in a bit of a ruckus with a guy named Saul, and he was on the run. And Psalm 91 goes as follows, "He that dwelleth in the secret place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty," and it goes on with some very comforting words, Sammy.
Thank you.
And we read it every night. I got a couple of people in line of fire tonight. Stoplights, good gosh, that's the one thing I didn't know I couldn't fix, and thank you for bringing it up, Al. Jimmy, I agree with you. Vincent was there when we got half the citizens of the Lugolf Business District beating me up, and Jimmy, too, for that issue, and I assure you, it's very much well within the staff to handle, but Mr. Sheehan and Lori Fundenberg are both very much aware of that. Thank you. It was really amazing to see that happen and unfortunate. Veterans Park, you know where we need to go with that. Thank you, Commander Fuller, for being here tonight, and I think you know whether your support is, now it's up to us to structure it. We need, owe you an answer, and the staff needs to hear from the policy side first. It is not the staff's fault, it's up to us. Thank you, Ben, for raising the courthouse issue. Gosh, it's a mess down there, and we need to do something about it. Janie Hasty will tell you, and the judges and the magistrates and the lawyers who work in that courthouse from time to time, and our great sheriff's office will tell you, we need to do something there. It's in our goals and objectives, and we need to empower and encourage Mr. Carpenter to get on with it. I think there's money in the budget, and I look forward to seeing that solution soon. And that is an exclamation point, and I like, that is really important. And your mother, too, by the way, Lauren talks to me about it all the time. As to the conduct of this office, look, the chairman's got a tough job, and nobody, I'm not asking for sympathy, but I do need you to understand that I respect each of the men up here, and if I've offended, I apologize, but I don't go back on my principles, and it is important for me that you know that I trust you, and I want to be courteous with you in the conduct of my role up here, and I thank you for the criticism. I don't need to be any sympathy, I just need to have your corrections, that you to be straightforward with me when you think I'm out of line, and I appreciate that, and none of you are shy about that. So thank you, gentlemen, it's a privilege to be your chairman, and I hope I can live up to your requirements. Lastly, let's be gracious. As the Chinese say, the man that's saying it can't be done should not get in the way of the man or woman that's getting it done. Peggy? Thank you. Gave you a tough job, nobody gives you any sympathy, and you're not supposed to get it, but to win one takes as much work as it does to lose one. It takes staff, it takes a lot of work, it takes teamwork, it takes the state, it takes the federal government, it takes the members of this board backing up our economic development. We have put a lot of money against it to turn around what had been neglected for years and years. That includes the school system, that includes the infrastructure, and it's time for us to support those and say thank you for those who've worked very hard for you. I congratulate you on your new position, and I assure you, Mr. Carpenter is going to get somebody that can meet the standards that we have established. This is important for our county and our cities and our people, that jobs are provided and an economic future provided in accordance with what we've laid out for ourselves in Vision 2030, and by gosh, at least this chairman means to get it done, and I know Vic does, too. So with that, Mr. Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, a number of items to cover with you. First, I wish to update council on the airport. In fact, first of September, the county FBO that had had a contractual relationship had notified us back in the summer that they would be leaving the airport. The county assumed responsibility September 1st. Showing you the map there, the airport, just to illustrate that previously, the county had been responsible for blue buildings, they were responsible for yellow, now the county is responsible for all the buildings. The switchover has been smooth, as they always are when we do a switchover in this county. Nobody noticed one day that the FBO was gone. Personnel were there, personnel were happy, airport pilots were happy, the county continues to run. We have assumed responsibility for all fuelings, for all maintenance of hangars and responsibility. So that has transpired very nicely and smoothly. Other projects going on out there, we're currently in the process of finishing up the drainage project. You may recall, council approved the awarding of that bid. It was an FAA-sponsored project, $1.7 million, began in the middle of May. We look to be finished right around Thanksgiving with the total project as well, and the county is beginning the process of putting out a bid for a study on the condition of the buildings, the hangars especially, so that we can determine what repair work and maintenance needs to be done to those buildings as well. Also, Mr. Chairman, members of council, would like to introduce to you, you may have noticed, Officer Scott, Kermit Scott, standing in, Deputy Scott, is our new security for this council building. As you have noticed, part of the commitment that was made last year and then this year in the budget was to create a more secure environment for our citizens and our employees in this building, and one of those was to have a full-time deputy here Monday through Friday. Deputy Scott has 25 years of law enforcement experience. He is a seasoned veteran, and we're excited he's here and look forward to working with you on a daily basis.
And he's big.
That was not in consideration, I'm sure, as well. We thought about Mr. Tucker, but he just wasn't big enough.
But he's a veteran also. He don't know, I've already checked on his resume, credentials, that's right.
Yes, sir. And also, Mr. Chairman, members of council, I would like to tell you that we're losing someone amazing with Ms. McLean moving on, and the role, the position she is taking in commerce is a testimony to not just her skill set and her abilities, but the reputation she has and the view and the belief of the highest levels in state government that she can take on a program that will be focusing on some of the poorest counties in the state and working with them to achieve greater things for them. In losing Peggy, and it is a loss, we lose a team member, we lose a dedicated employee, we lose someone who always gave and will always continue to give her best for this county. She never gave me a bad day's work. She treated this county with respect and love. Cannot replace an employee like that. Her eight years of service to this community have been valuable. As she moves on, and as Mr. Jones has pointed out, this is critical, and we will hire the best person that is out there and that is available for this county, and that person will assume, as Mr. Jones has also very correctly pointed out, a county with buildings, a county that has infrastructure that is there. We didn't have that luxury eight years ago, and so Peggy, you've been a great value to this county and an asset, and you definitely are missed, and that's my report.
Thank you. I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. Roger, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner, any discussion? All right, we'll see you in about a month. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and we are adjourned, unanimous.